Alright, this will be. May twenty first, second of the Toledo Washington Planning Commission. Guess we can start by. Hudgeon. Right, please do.
Alright, please let me lead us to the reply. The United States of America. And to the Republic, where wishes stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And put in the spot, I totally forgot.
Thank you, Chair. While we are short a couple of members due to resignation and either tardiness or absence, we do have a forum. And.
Do we have a resignation?
I'm sorry.
Did we actually have a resignation?
We do.
Until later tonight. Of course. Oh, okay.
Did we not read our packet?
That is correct. We got the last step.
Okay. Anyway, a call for other business items. Um, Todd, you brought my attention, the Toledo Comprehensive Fan Update Schedule that we normally speak of. And we'll put that down into other business. Uh, towards the end of our meeting. Yeah. Any discussion on the business licenses?
None.
About the meeting, that it's any additions or changes that you think need to be made?
I would move that we accept.
It's already been moved and seconded.
So.
Do we know what the petroleum construction is?
No, they're not in town, are they?
No, Ben's. Oh, because they're just, are they just fulfilling contracts here or?
They could be serving one of, uh, service stations.
I see.
Without further discussion, if it takes a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. Um, generally Rachel has a copy of Minnesota. Things for me to sign. You are so honorable. No public hearing, um. New business review, the draft critical areas code. And that's, that's the addition you put in with the corrections on the sideline, right?
That's correct.
If you would like to take over the conversation, I would appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Chair. We're working with ELS since the last meeting. They did do some research, uh, there were some questions that came up about mitigation banks. That serve Toledo and, um, and Carrie did find that. There is a mitigate, a mitigation bank service area that includes the city of Toledo, um, and also includes an area that we've identified for future urban growth expansion, which is now our urban reserve. But, um, so there is. Um, it's the Coweman Bank, it covers Toledo and has previous, previously sold credits for a project in twenty eighteen. And I think the Toledo Airport even bought credits in that bank too.
What is the name of that again?
The, it is the Coweman. Bank. And these are the mitigation. Um, the mitigation bank service areas, so whether you're in the Cowie. Middle, they won't loan you money to buy a house, but they'll loan you wetland credits that you pay dearly for unless you develop into wetlands elsewhere. Um. And, uh, so, so we do have that and we do have the mitigation bank language in the code. Um, and it is a preferred option, so it's available to developers. So, yeah, that was a question that came up at the last meeting and I just wanted to offer that first and foremost before we dive in. There aren't very many, um. Uh, so what you have before you tonight is basically, um. The draft that you saw last time with all of the changes accepted. There are still a few notes in the columns, um. Modern intensity agriculture. I went back and as I was reviewing the notes to prepare the agenda, prepare the agenda items for this meeting. Um, you did opt to leave that in, so it is, it will be left in the draft, um. The next column, uh, the next question down there. Um, you know, carries. And this is, uh, let's see. Section seventeen thirty-eight two seventy C. It puts a huge, huge burden on the applicant. Um, so some of these comments tonight are things that were in the last draft or that we talked about last time. That they modified, um, and this would be something that's. Maybe pushing the envelope a bit, um, and some of their guidance here is. Let's try this and see if we can make it work, given the concessions that we've made elsewhere in the code to help to, to help to mitigate for impacts to buffers and wetlands. Um, this may be acceptable, but it may not be, uh, acceptable. If we propose something that's not acceptable, one of the state agencies will tell us and. And see that talks about, um. And so the buffer are provided. And that's the one that Harry is, is noting, it puts a huge burden on the applicant to plant any buffer area that is unvegetated, so it's not just planting. Growth areas. Um, and those are often. Off act, lower intensity, so. Um, as you're converting land from agricultural practice into subdivision development or industrial or commercial development. Um. What Carrie is noting here is to leave it in the way it is. Makes people replant those areas as if they were. Part of their impacted areas, so they're suggesting we. Take, uh, buffers, right? Right now, this is, we're talking about wetlands, habitat buffers and, um, stream buffers and things will come back at a future date. Um, we can talk about that later, we talked about schedule, but.
Um, I don't want to get too technical, but, uh, those, those areas that. I, I have, uh, lack vegetation. And, and then the landowner then has to, uh, plant a community, plants. Does grass count?
Um, not by itself, no, grass is not, um. Grasses, there are some wetland species in grasses, but you want a diverse ecosystem in there, so usually when you see a weapon mitigation planting, they'll have a variety of shrubs, trees, grasses, ground cover of other, of, of other varieties too. Um, but not lawn, not turf grass is never. It's never a mitigation.
Or, or pasture grass or.
Pasture.
Hay field that's gone, just back to wild.
So I guess you've gotten too technical for me already, uh, hayfield that's gone wild, you know, I don't, I don't know if pasture grass qualifies as a wetland grass or not, some of them may cross over. I doubt it, I mean, the hayfields don't qualify as wetland buffers, so.
Oh, okay.
But left alone, the wetland will be so more hospitable.
Well, that, that kind of leads me to another question I had. Uh, a landlord comes in and, uh. Uh, uh, sees on the map or knows ahead of time that, that there are wetlands on their property. And they tell Carly that they want to build. And they'd really like to, you know, get a little closer than the, the three hundred feet or one hundred fifty feet or whatever their, their particular wetland would require. Okay, it's. Probably not going to be Carly or Rachel that go out to enforce all the. The codes that we see. What agency then? So actually goes on site and instructs the landlord what they need to do.
So the, the city codes apply and we're responsible for enforcement of those. EIS note that there's a wetland there and require them to submit a report from. From a great face test. Um, you know, if we, if we know the site and we know that there's duck and beaver and birds and everything else, and they submit a report saying there's no weapon there, then we're not going to accept that, we'll then hire our own consultant at the applicant's expense and then have them review it for technical. Accuracy. Um, generally, we don't, we wouldn't need to do that. We just look at it and like I said, as long as it meets everybody's great face test, then, then we accept it because it's from a qualified professional and they're generally up and up. You know, even though they're working for the applicant, they still have a standard of care. Um, the state agency is responsible for, for, for wetlands. Are. Department of Ecology cares about the buffers, fish and wildlife, um, cares more about streams, but every once in a while they get involved with that. Um, Fisheries and Marine Services sometimes will get involved with weapons, so there's a host of state agencies that are looking over our shoulder to make sure that we're not making mistakes too.
Okay.
I hope, hope that helps to answer your question.
Absolutely.
But, you know, on. But it, it could be Carly that reviews the application and decides, yep, that looks good.
She is the first stop.
But the requirement is for them to. It's the applicant's responsibility to provide the information that's required in our code. We're requiring them to. Submit something from a qualified professional.
Right, it's okay.
Well, I hope by the time we start looking at that type of situation. We have developed a. Planning division. Of sorts.
We did Calhoun Meadows just fine and they had wetlands in critical areas and habitats and streams and all kinds of.
And we're going to get into some commercial industrial and it's going to become real bear.
Same process, but yes, I, uh, but hopefully you do, I mean, hopefully Carly's not responsible for that stuff alone and. And hopefully someday you don't need a consulting planner and a consulting engineer, you can have your own city engineer and your own planning department. But until you do.
Yes, indeed. Um, from the standpoint of having them remove that one. Art. From the development side, you'd rather. Rather than having to go in and redo a wetland. Cause it's quite expensive. And, uh, so let's try to get away with. Removing that.
Move that language in there.
And see if we can, can do that, um.
Tighten it up a little bit to make sure that they don't have to replant areas.
I've, I've had to build wetlands in the past and they are owners be expensive.
But isn't this just to determine, uh, whether or not, like if they don't. No, the, the requirement there. If the existing buffer is unvegetated, sparsely vegetated or vegetated with invasive species that do not perform the needed functions. The buffer should either be planted to create the appropriate plant community or the buffer should be widened to ensure that adequate functions of the buffer are provided. Popable land, so. And it's more significant for the amount of area that's, doesn't meet the criteria, so. Oftentimes when we, you know, for example, I don't know if you all are familiar with the city of Battleground in Southern Washington. But they have a lot of farmland that came into their urban growth area, when that happened. What they started discovering was there were wetlands everywhere in Battleground. And they were out in the middle of fields that had been farmed for generations. And, you know, you go out there and it would meet the characteristics and the hydrology. And in some cases, you know, they even had, they even had farmed grasslands planted through them, a lot of cases they didn't, they were just too mucky for the farmer to get his tractor through, so he'd just steer around them when he was planting the fields and. Um, but those areas then were weapons and they were in the middle of fields and then they had hundred foot, two hundred foot buffers on them, well, now we have three hundred foot buffers on them. So now you're talking about that happening throughout those, those development areas. And what this is saying is the three hundred foot buffer may not be enough. Right. If it doesn't meet the, the functional criteria to protect that, that wetland. And to protect a wetland that's been. Effectively farmed for years is different for state agencies than it is for farmers, right? I mean, a lot of people that. Look at that from historical values, don't understand the way that the critical areas codes are intended today to protect wetlands and functions, so, um. You might end up with a four hundred and fifty foot buffer in order to establish the same function you could get away with with a three hundred or a two hundred foot buffer.
Where you write a big check.
So, or you start planting.
To the, to the land bank.
So, well, you give away, you give away either land, which gives away hopefully a higher value than what you'd spend in planting. But eventually you reach that crunch point, so what this is saying is let's just take it out there so they don't have to replant unvegetated areas. Do you just have to preserve the required buffer, whether it's vegetated or not?
You can protect the existing buffer, something's going in that extra space. Whether it's. You know, part of the subdivision, part of a parking lot, part of. You know, a housing subdivision, the land's going to get filled with something. And I'd rather have the developer to have the option to fill it with something that's. Going to generate revenue, whether. Make nice. So the existing ground that's outside the buffer.
So the question in this section is, is when they're doing that to a portion of the buffer. Where the other portions of the buffer are substandard. Do they have to make? In the area where they're having the impact, so what ELS is suggesting is the mitigation in the area where they have the impact is appropriate. But requiring them to replant the rest of the buffer that may be substandard is not a reasonable. Mitigation measure for. For that. It's, it's exactly what you're saying. Except that I wanted to point out that nuance, because that is important, I mean, if, if for you all in the community of Toledo, you say, well, no, we, we think the entire buffer should be brought up to standard because they are getting a financial benefit from being able to impact that and being able to develop. And we protect the ecological quality of our wetlands to the highest degree, then you don't want to take what they're suggesting here and move forward. It, it would result in potentially a lower quality of buffer being. Some development. Right, because you're, you're basically taking away all the other, um, flora that's around that. Past that buffer and you're building all on it, so there's just a lot less vegetation in the area, so you want to increase that buffer with native plants, so. Retain the water, retain the erosion, prevent all the migration of chemicals into the, the wetland. My question is more aligned with Toms, I mean, to some degree, do, is there an agency that if, if there is some serious danger to the environment, they are going to be able to point that out in this process? Essentially, and we don't, we're trying to basically not stifle the investment coming through the community. Only to the degree that your code allows. Um, even, I mean, unless the state agency has a permit outside of your own local permit authority. Their only ability is to comment and your only ability is to enforce the codes that you have in place. So if you take this out. And you do get a farm field that gets impacted and somebody wants to impact just one side of a, of a wetland. And the other side is completely unvegetated. Then. Taking this out would allow them to do that. And then could never get improved. In that scenario. And then, and we still have a choice for whether or not to allow it or not, do we have discretion on how much vegetation we allow to put in, do, can we, can we be more reasonable than, than just? You must do a full habitat, I call, I don't, that's a little bit undefined for me, how many species represent a full habitat and that sort of thing? Could it just be the, the small planting or something simple, could it be, could we lessen the burden? In some way with language? Well, the options that. That ELS has given us. But only in the areas of impact, they're not requiring the developer to go back in and retrofit areas that were substandard before being up there, so only. For, if it's all substandard. Then they may go in there and still choose to plant that, or they might clear out.
Oh, exactly.
And get credits.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're not required to bring the entire buffer up to a standard. To meet. To meet that, that water quality benefit. Yeah, so it's only, so always within the area that they're impacting, they have to revegetate that. This still says that, yes. Okay, great, so I'm with you, I'll then move and, I, I think that's good enough.
I'm, I'm just trying to put my. Mind around the, uh, general. Attitude that most of the farmers around here would have, instead rather how you take that wetlands and its buffer and. Put it in a circular file and let them do what they can do until they can't do it anymore.
Sure, so.
Just like they've been farming it, you know, until the tractor gets stuck in the mud, we, we, we farm it.
I have that every winter.
Yeah.
And then it's a wetland in winter. And then you don't farm that area next year because the tractor gets stuck in the mud and you know better.
But, you know, our, our job here is to represent our, our constituents too and, and taking our views into consideration, I, I think is important, it's nice to. To, to look into the future where Toledo is, is hubbing metropolis with these beautiful buffer zones that have been fully vegetated. I just don't see it. My personal opinion.
Yeah, I, 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 for me, it would be the, I don't want to see the nightmare scenario of everything just being an industrial wasteland. So I don't want to see that either.
Well, I, I don't, I think in a lot of instances, we're going to find ourselves with conditional approvals.
Right.
Uh, on a lot of projects, so that we're going to have a say in what happens. And, and in essence, this is developers are not so short sighted. That they're going to allow a eyesore. To be the highlight of their business or residential property.
Yeah, I totally agree, what I was trying to point out is that we take both of these extremes, I think we're both in the middle somewhere.
I think so too.
Yeah. But there's, but there's not really, I mean, either you're requiring complete mitigation or you're not with this one, if, because we're just looking at this one little section. Yeah, and if you take it off, my understanding is. We still have all the other sections that connect the function in my. And they still have to address whatever the impact or. That's correct. Yeah, so then I, I'm totally okay with taking it off. They just don't. By taking it out, they don't have to fix what was broken before they got there, they have to fix what they're breaking, but not anymore. And they can choose to fix the other parts if they want.
Digging out.
So we'll, and it. It may not fly with the state agencies when they review our code anyway, so.
We may not get to take it.
So you might not get to.
Okay. But we'll try.
Um, so the next comment in here is on the functionally isolated wetland buffers and this does directly relate to some of the co- discussion that we had last time about what happens with the. The, the vertical separation, um, so they proposed language here. Um, and in this case, this is, um, something that they haven't seen accepted by ecology. But. Um. But it does seem to address that vertical separation and seems to be something that. From their opinion would be supportable as a, as a. Functionally isolated. Wetland buffer. So where you have a weapon with a cliff next to it. This doesn't apply to streams, weapons only, we're not talking about streams yet, so.
Oh.
The Renade decision.
I, I'm biased, although we do this size.
Not good, okay.
They haven't seen that language accepted by ecology. But then.
So we took option one. On our thing and, uh. Shall we move, move on?
Yep.
To capital facilities, transportation, water and sewer. Or love and greed.
It's the easy one.
Sure.
Which, which I think is water.
Water.
Um. So, uh, what we've done with each one of these is we've taken the projected and population and employment increase. We've projected what that additional demand might be in each of the systems, water, this fluid transportation. And then assess the capacity of different components to be able to. Um. Meet those demands and then identify improvements or projects that would be necessary to, to be able to, to support that demand over the long term. Increased by about three hundred percent, uh, with the projected population and employment increase. Um. As some of you may be aware, the, the city is currently, uh, in the process of trying to get a water right application approved. By ecology, the. Process just seems to never come to an end. But. The water is there, it, ecology has agreed it's available, it's just getting the documentation completed from, uh, the water right consultant that is assisting the city with that and getting ecology to approve it. When they do so, um, the city will likely have another hundred, get hundred and ninety gallons a minute, uh, and instantaneous water rate and then perhaps up to three or acre feet, um, of additional water, right, that's, that part's still being negotiated some, but the, the annual, um, quantity is not nearly as important in the short or the long term as the instantaneous quantity because of the limitations there. But ultimately, assuming that that happens here over the next year or so, which we think should. Um, the projected demand from this additional population and employment that we're projecting will require additional water rights, about a hundred and fifteen gallons a minute of additional instantaneous water rates. Uh, additional well capacity, about eighty-five gallons a minute, additional well capacity.
Now, the, uh. Landowners that have. Have indicated that they have agricultural wealth on their property that are producing heavily and have been. And add them.
Um, so it's possible, um. We, you know, hear this a lot as, you know. We look at, at development of, of cities and the more rural areas, um. In practice, you know, the, the. Ability to transfer that. Um, historically used into a, a water right that the city can use, um. Rarely, uh, can you get, if they say you can, they, I've got a hundred gallons a minute here, um. Rarely do you get close to that and what's actually transferable, because in order to transfer a water right like that, they need to prove that it's been uh, beneficially used in that quantity and has not had a period of non-use of greater than five years.
I think we held a meeting with one of those persons, uh, about two years ago now, and they've been adamant that they're continuing to plant. Nothing crops and continuing to use those wells, but.
That, that certainly can help, but ultimately, when we get into that type of situation, we have to document it to the doc, part of ecology as part of a water right transfer. Um, they require, you know, proof of continuous use of a certain quantity that you want to transfer. And, um, it, you can certainly do it, but I, I just be, I. I just they have, um, is less than ecology will let them transfer, so.
Now, what about additional water storage? Can we deal with it in that way at all?
Um.
Especially when we get out to like the industrial area where there's actually room for a. A large million gallon tank.
Yeah, um. That's what we're doing currently, you know, so there is a shortage of instantaneous water rates currently uh, that the city faces, and so the city has, uh. Excess storage that we use. Um, what's called multi-day equalizing storage to, because your sources generally meet your peak day demands, your, your, your highest demand on a day during the summer. Um, but your usage during the day, um. Goes up and down, and so you need to meet your peak hour. Or storage for that typically, but then you also have storage that is. Peak day. Um, but we say, well, that peak day doesn't occur for, you know, a period of two straight weeks. It's, you know, a peak day with, you know, a couple higher days around it and, you know, if we can produce enough water at this level, and then we got some storage, additional storage to help meet those other days that we. Other days that we don't quite meet the peak day on. What we're doing now, um. Ideally, the best long-term solution is that you develop additional. And 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 I think it's possible to do, it is part of the the. Been sitting around since, you know. Nineties, late nineties, early two thousands and finally getting processed. It hadn't been processed for a while, uh because it costs money to do that and. It wasn't clear that it would actually be successful, but as part of doing this work. It was found that that. Those current wells are in. A basin that ecology doesn't consider close.
Right.
To new appropriations, so. You know, drill another well and and um develop additional water rights. In that. Similar area, obviously, it's gotta be far enough away from two existing wells to to be able to. Be productive, but um close enough that it's in that same um hydrologic basin. That ecology is considering, so. I think it's. Reasonable that in the twenty year horizon that you might need to develop that, that you could do so, and you have to plan ahead, takes. Five, ten years, sometimes the develop a new source like that, but it's certainly plausible to do with the. State of the ecology. Water right rules right this minute in this area.
So now, how are we funding those? Those rates petitions now?
Um, you're doing it out of, well, so so. The city got an appropriation from the state to do some water system planning. Water rights acquisition and um essentially design of, you know, some of the water. Uh extensions and and, you know, storage, boost your pump station, storage projects that we've already essentially completed. That appropriation's been spent, and so the last dribs and drabs of that water rate processing are coming out of city reserves at this point. So, um, it is something most likely that. A a future water right process would need to be paid out of, you know, city funds, although there are opportunities with some. Public financing pro uh programs. Uh drinking water state revolving fund or public works trust fund or US stable development where you might be able to get some. Loan and some grants or subsidy uh to to do some projects like that. So, yeah, I I. I think it's reasonable, even though sometimes, you know, that shoot, I need more water right is. Can feel like that's a real hard heavy lift. In this situation, I think it's a reasonable thing to include and it's not a. You know, a no go.
Okay.
If you will. But in addition to the, you know, that, you know, water right and and well capacity, you need some additional storage capacity and and we'd already. Suggested that is part of the the water system plan that we completed here last year. Um, be a little bit more storage.
It's really tough moving forward with our tank.
They kind of uh went quiet, um. I think there's some. Let's say disagreement between the developers of. Of Joma and folks doing Cal Cal uh Calis Meadows and Toledo tell as far as. Who should be contributing how much and when and how and why.
And by understanding that Joma sold their property to Max on.
Okay, well, that. One uh variable out of that, um, but, yeah, I think. Toledo tell. Uh has. Felt like, well, we can just build a. You know, use the existing well up there and build a tank and we're fine, you know, our own little tank to serve this and. Um, I don't think that. That they will, if they try and do that, they'll significantly limit their development potential.
Well, they don't have building permit, I do it.
So, I it's just. It's a, it's. Frequently one of those things with development that.
Well, I was curious because I went out there and the staking was there. You know, which looked like future staking for their property and then all of a sudden nothing.
Yeah. It it's been quiet, I haven't heard anything.
I haven't heard anything either.
Well, then let's press forward with sewer. Because that's a little bit harder to tangle.
Yeah, um. Flows, projected flows again increased, say, by a factor of three. Loadings, I'm a little, there's been some variability in loadings down to treatment plant and I'm not. Quite sure why we've been trying to to figure that. That was every so often from the influence channel. So at low flows, you can get things that that um settle out and you can pull not. On the where that's located, so we're we're trying to. Understand that a little bit better, um, but the you you size treatment facilities based on flows and loadings. Flows can be a little more variable because you have. Uh rainfall that gets into pipes into sewers um and gets. It's not very strong waste at that point because it's watered down, uh but you have to have the capacity to push it through. Um, loadings are more commonly what. Uh drive the sizing of most treatment facility components.
Is the solids or the organic?
Yeah, the organics and the and the solids, so the, you know, B O D. Fashion demand is your organic loading and then uh to total suspended solids is your your um. Solid flow and um it. Right now, it looks like tho- those might increase by, you know, closer to, you know, factor of three point five to three points. So wanna try and refine that if we can.
That's here, just so that in order to dilute that, if you need to, you need to really expand the pipes and all of that with stuff like that. Am I thinking about that going?
Yeah, so, um. There are. On those projected closer boats, one is the main trunk line that goes down fifth from. Ash down the treatment plant would need to get upsized, pretty much every segment of it would be undersized.
Okay.
Would need be, would need to get upsized. Um, and then the second is the treatment plant would need to get expanded and and. More than likely, it's gonna be essentially a doubling of the plant we've got in existing.
We have room for that, though.
And there is room, there's there's. From a technical standpoint, there's plenty of room, you can, you know, build a. Essentially a mirrored plant, which I think is. Fires second UV channel.
That's currents. System and. You know, because we were talking, you know, your reports are talking about upsizing. And replacing current components, if we mirror it, would we need to do that?
Not not necessarily, although there may be certain and and and. I'm looking at this at this, you know, twenty thousand foot level, and there may be certain things that it would be more efficient. To replace, you know, maybe your your ultraviolet disinfection instead of, you know, mirroring and putting another, you know, parallel. System in maybe instead of that, you're better off taking out your low pressure, low intensity. Uh system and putting in a low pressure, high intensity system that can provide more treatment in that same footprint. You you get further into projects and and detail the sign.
They can address the capacity with design or scale or.
Right, but but for but for now, I I rough. You know. Set of components along the way, um roughly, and and I need to refine this a bit, um, cause I it was still a little. Puzzled about some of the loadings, but, you know, roughly fifteen to twenty million dollars for a doubling of that plant. Um, and I can, again, work on refining that over the next, you know. Purposes of this discussion, wanted to have a an an order of magnitude for you.
Yeah, I don't think we have an issue with dollars when it. Obtain that through hookup fees and our reserves. Uh. In the sewer system bank account, but. You know, when it comes to doubling the size of the sewer treatment plant. You know, it's 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 either you find some very generous person, you float a bond. Or you find some kind of a grant.
Yeah, and 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 most likely, you know, if you were to do something like this, um. First of all, what I would. Suggest, once we, you know, hone in on this a little bit more, if this is what gets adopted as part of your comprehensive plan. Next thing you do is let's update, do a a a study to update your water and sewer connection fees.
Right.
Because. Right now.
Having just done that.
Yeah, but it but, you know, it it. You had less data and you had less projected growth, right? So connection. Connect water and sewer connection charges can generally have two components, one is. The value of existing facilities that new customers are buying into. And two is the value of planned facilities that will benefit future develop.
Right.
And so. Your value of planned facilities right now is. Virtually zero, like we we have not had, it hasn't been a a general sewer wastewater facility plan down here since the last time we. Upgraded the wastewater plant, so your your capital. Projects that you're projected for. The sewer side are are not very much right now. Um, when you have an adopted plan. Then you can reference that planning and say, okay, here's here's what we see coming. And this is our projected number of of future connections and this will be our total number of future connections, you can divide your potential. Uh for your connection charge and then you look at that and you look around and what the. The market is, um, do we price ourselves out in development by? You know, having it too high, and maybe we try to go a little lower and and try for some additional funding assistance to make that happen. Um, because there is. There are opportunities, whether that's again from the Department of Ecology, um Sustainable Water Fund. Uh their state revolving fund or um, you know, state rural development where you can potentially get. Capital funds to help build something, whether that's as a loan or uh some some grant or some some subsidy associated with it, particularly if you're. Also, while you're doing an expansion for capacity. Helping to. Either fix things that are. Not in great shape currently or, you know, providing an additional uh.
Right, these types of grants to be able to shore up the the to align the minorities.
Correct, so, but it is, I mean, it's a it's a big bite and and that's the that's the the hardest one to. To make happen because you can't. You're not gonna have a developer that's gonna come in and write you a, you know, fifty million dollar check to to um, you know, upgrade a wastewater treatment.
And you can't wait till the population grows to the point where they can pay for it either.
Correct, so you you do have to end up. Um, building. Before they come or just as they're coming, um, that's the that's the ideal and and. You know, there is.
And who's gonna spearhead this? And that's that, I'm sorry, but that's the thing that I see as the major. Stumbling block for all of this, if this all takes. Management. By s- by people who know what they're doing. And are in a position to foresee where we're gonna be, I I'm talking council and planning commission. And. You know, I I think. I think we have one council person who's not running. Who probably would have put the most effort into making sure that this happens. And I don't know who. You know, I don't know how long I'll be on the planning commission in my seventies. You know, Renee is perfectly and Tom can can hold the fort, but. Somebody is gonna have to be here spearheading this. And I I just have this giant fear unless it's Todd. Working on the outside is is. To pull out of the woodwork. Over the last three years, we're far out. Back into place through a lot of man hours and a lot of diligence on a lot of people. But it takes a director. And someone who knows what they're doing, and I'm afraid. That right now, we're stuck with a lot of people who like to be on Facebook and and. And and bad mouth. The people in these in these seats. But nobody wants to step up and bring their expertise to the table.
Do you think, Steve, that making a plan that is comprehensive?
Sorry, I'll get off my soapbox.
No, 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 making a plan that's comprehensive enough and that sort of captures the level of um. Direction that you wanna have in there is sort of foundational for that, cause whoever gets in place to have to follow what's in the plan to put in place, right?
Boy, I don't disagree with you a- at all, Renee, I, you know, I think you can put a lot of time and effort into putting that plan together, a. You know, a directional guide to ensuring that the city runs properly. And then you have to kick somebody in the butt and make sure they open the actual binds or.
Oh, I'm saying in the in the process of time, right? If we're not here anymore for some reason, at least we have that, that's our current, uh. Yeah, that's our charge, right? To to leave this this instruction clear.
So I I didn't give you all a preface to this, and maybe I should have, I I mean, in the context of what we're doing here, we're updating your compre. Our memos that explain some of the technical elements that go into that and kind of outline. Outline that comprehensive plan element.
And he scared the heck out of me.
So 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 these are. This is all information that has to go into your comprehensive plan in those sections.
I don't have the argument.
But but we can include a section of a preamble that generalizes this. More, right? We can, we can take all all of this and we can say, you know. To some degree.
Yeah, it certainly can, I mean, I I I can, you know, appreciate. Pass, this is a big thing to try to pull off. And it's a a bit of a a needle to thread, um, in order to to. Be able to meet, develop, you know, you're you're saying, hey, this is development, we're willing to try to take on and trying to to um. Accommodate here over time, and if we're gonna do so. We've got to be able to build the infrastructure that's gonna accommodate that. Close to when it, you know, they show up. Um, and that that does take. Um, some, you know. Commitment from, you know, city leadership, you know, where the city count. Like you and I can help with that, you know, we. When if we know this is the 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 direction you want ahead and we know that this is what's coming. From our perspective, we can help with the. Hey. Planner, update the general sewer wastewater facility plan together to to start honing in on this a little bit closer. And then, you know, come up with the specific components of that project, here are the different. Friend to have the. Runway to be able to get that designed and built before, you know, this certain timeframe. But it still requires, you know, somebody, you know, in the the, you know, the city count. Nation, the city staff to help. You know. Provide that that support and that impetus to make it happen, and and I think that's that's maybe what you're.
Exactly what I'm hearing.
Yeah, and 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 it 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 happens, you know, we we've we've helped. Um, like we, you know, Todd and I both worked in in Ridgefield as they went from. You know, twenty three hundred people to.
Yeah.
What are they, fifteen thousand?
Fifteen, yeah, close.
Um.
If not over.
And and.
All those rooftops and all that development out there.
And and, you know, that was. And and you know, that was not necessarily a straight line. There were, there were some some, you know, definitely some twists and turns if that went, as he meant, uh, as the as the city did grow. Um, they did bring on, you know, both more, um. Uh, experienced staff, um, because they could grow. Some of their staff, because they had more people that had more revenue coming in, so they had, and they had more growth happening, so they were able to. To hire some additional staff that had some experience in that thing that they could help. Push along and and, you know, when I started there. Their works director, they didn't have a city engineer, um, I was it, I was going down there twice. See what developments going on and how we can help, and then over time they hired a public works director, they. You know, a couple of staff engineers and and they were able to to take on more of that. Load themselves, you know, we we helped to kind of. Get it moving, so there is there is. Um, you know, the ability for that to happen over time as as city populations grow and. And, um. Support that, uh, but it is, it is a bit of a a needle to thread.
And and part of this is because of the huge amount. I'm expected to take.
Right.
So when we talk about, you know, Ridgefield going, going from twenty-three hundred to fifteen thousand or sixteen or whatever. You know, you're you're projected to go from nine hundred. To, you know, several thousand, that that first jump in population is the most difficult one, because you don't have. You don't have. It's. It's not linear, right? As you add a population, the bigger cities tend to grow. In huger volumes easier than smaller cities because they have that staff, but those first few hurdles of getting people in place to be able to be city staff and do those things.
Yeah, well, you you know, when you sit with a a stagnant population for a long period of time. You don't need. That type of staff. Because all you need to do is keep the wheels running, you know, fix what breaks. And that's it, and and try not to outtax people that want to lynch you for it.
The good, the good thing is, I think that without any action, if nobody jumps. Jumps and pushes for action to happen, I think you'll relatively stay stagnant. I think in, you know, the the types of development you'll see will be locally inspired development. As you, if you have somebody on staff or on council or on planning commission that's pushing for. An expansion of your urban growth area out to the point where you touch I five, I think that's where development becomes explosive. Because that that catalyst then where you take in that that huge amount of land will be. If 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 nobody pushes for anything, then I think you can stay small for a long time. Um, if if somebody desires to grow for one reason or another, to help to offset other funding deficits or do whatever that small cities sometimes need to do to. To get out of a a. A growth issue. I think you have the ability to grow quickly, um, I think you're gonna feel development pressure, but.
You know, you still have to, you still have to be able to provide services at the same level, and services always get more expensive. And you can't stay stagnant in your tax base and still be able to afford to do those things to improve. And, uh. You know, the old grow or die is not that far off.
No, that's unfortunately true for a lot of small towns. So the, but the other thing that I would like to say is, although just as a matter of function, you see me more frequently. Mike is just as involved with with the city and doing and doing engineering side.
And 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 to be honest, you know, it hasn't been, there hasn't been a lot of. Projects going on here over the last, let's say, year to to year and a half, I had been. A lot more involved as we were getting the water booster station and what. What, you know, we start to, okay, this is the plan and these are the things that we need to do. Will be a lot more, you know, present in helping. Projects to get moving and started, um, so. We work, you know, pretty closely with small towns, you know, when once the vision is is expressed to help make that vision happen.
Very good.
So move on to transportation.
Let's do, um, how are we gonna pay for the two roundabouts?
Well, roundabout, you know, tho- those type of things are actually in in some ways a little easier, um, than a wastewater treatment plant because, uh. Uh, uh, infrastructure, um, frequently you can, um, get development to. Do in 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 doing that, because they have a direct. Linkage to it, um. So, you know, just like the the water and sewer, we're gonna have more demand on on the roads. One of the things that, uh, our our transportation sub consult, uh. Did is, and it's an important assumption is is. Because there's no way with transportation impacts, they're more. Uh, geographically. We just said, hey, you're gonna. Put another seventeen hundred people and eighteen hundred employee. The growth area, well, that's not possible. SOC is not big enough to contain all of that, so, um. He needed to say, okay, I'm gonna have a bunch, most, a good chunk of these additional trips and development will actually happen in the urban reserve. Um, some of, you know, some will happen in the current urban growth area, but it's limited. Much of it, that that additional, um, development would have to happen in the urban reserve. So then the trick with what he does is he's gotta say, okay, how much of that? Potential development out there to the towards the freeway is gonna go towards the freeway with. It's gonna come towards town.
Okay.
And and he has some, um, existing, uh, traffic data that he can. Look at to to help make that. Judgment, um, but it's a little hard, it's a bit of a crystal ball, a fuzzy crystal ball, to say, is that gonna be? Exactly the same split in the future, or might that be different in the future? But the the assumptions he made, uh, just so that you're aware of it, because I think it's a key thing to can to to understand is that. On the AM peak hour. Potential trips might pass through some of the study intersections which are, you know, down here towards towards town. And about thirty percent of the commercial industrial, so more of the commercial industrial trips would head towards the freeway in the morning. In the evening, you have had about fifty percent of. I think that's a reasonable assumption, but. You know, if that were to change, if that assumption wasn't. Accurate over time, perhaps there might be more trips or less trips running through the the study intersections, but but as you noted. You know, hi- his analysis then, you know. Showed that the the two intersections that would have, um, potential, uh, level of service standard failures would be, uh. Five oh five and Ash, and then the the five oh five and Jackson Highway of Munden, um. Intersection and. The way to correct that would either be a signal or a a single lane roundabout, either one would, um. Allow those to function adequately. Because those are both state routes, um, there would have to be some coordination with Wash Dot to determine what would be the appropriate, um. Traffic control there, um. Up at, you know, Jackson Highway and and, you know, five oh five and Munden.
At some point in time, I can remember a report reading that in the, uh. That that intersection was already. Scheduled. On the state schedule for. Some type of revision. And. It's been several years, but it certainly never came to fruition.
Yeah, and I haven't, I haven't heard of anything, you know, that that's, you know, imminent there, I can certainly do a little digging to see if there's anything that's, you know, kind of stalled out or stale. You know, the the intersection that, no, no, fifth and Ash is a little more constrained, um. So it might be harder to do signaling roundabout, but not impossible, um, and, you know. The option of doing a signal there might be more, um. Cost effective or or less impactful as far as right away considerations, so. Both of those projects would obviously cost something to do, um, generally a signal is gonna be less than a roundabout, um. The. If the, um. City wanted to, you know, one of the the mechanisms that you could, um. Think about doing to fund some something like this is a transportation impact fee. What it would take is putting together a, uh, you know. A a essentially a. Document that. Takes this analysis. Divides the total, um, projected traffic going through that intersection, um. By the, you know, the number of trips and the cost and say, okay, it's this this many dollars per trip. Um, that would be allocated that intersection, and then, um, that could be something that is. Uh, added into a a, you know, traffic impact fee, if that's something the the city wanted to. To implement to help fund that, and I I I think that's a good. Way to ensure that, you know, development helps. Do that and 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 what. What it allows is. For. All the development that's gonna happen over the period of time to 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 contribute to that. Otherwise, you're stuck with this. Hey, um, do your traffic analysis as part of your individual development? Looks like this intersection, no intersections are failing yet, you're fine. Next one, do your analysis, no intersections are failing yet, do your development, and then you get to. The last guy and and and, oh, you're the guy that trips it over, so that intersection. You need to fix it. And 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 you can get to a point where. A bunch of folks got in without having to. Get the 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 one that that trips you over that ends up having to to either. Take. Significant burden there, or if they, if it gets to a point where. There's not a single large enough developer that can take that burden, then it may end up being. You know, the city has to go find funding to make that happen and then try to, you know, backfeed that with, um, charging. Yeah, costs on on future development.
Do you know what what kind of hoops we had to jump through just to get that flashing red light in the Membler Town?
Well, the good thing about having.
Sure, when we go to the state and say, we'd like to put two more stabilization intersections in the five oh five, but they're gonna.
So the state is gonna look at this. As part of your your comprehensive plan.
Right.
The DOT will review this at least at some planning level, they they don't approve of everything specifically, but they get early window things this way. So when you put these in your plan and say, this is our growth and this is what we plan to do to address it. From the beginning, I mean, this has to go through a ZEEPA review, so DOT will get that. It also goes through, um, an interagency review as part of the sixty day notice that we send to Commerce. And they they get. Mike, we can send this, we can send the the comp plan elements to Wash Dot now and say, this is what we're doing. And just put them directly on alert.
Well, I'm I'm just, I'm just saying that.
Comp plan doesn't give approval of the specific infrastructure, but it gives a notice. That this is what we're going to do.
So, and then, you know, as. They're not gonna say, well, great, you can do that. Um, but. They can see that this is what you're expecting as far as projected growth, and that this is where we may have impacts at intersections. Over the next twenty years and during that. You know, growth period. We would be working with Wash Dot as we got. Closer to it saying, okay, this is, looks like it's two years out or four years out or five years out. This is what we think is the optimum solution, and then they would provide us feedback on that, and then we'd figure out. What is the the definitive plan, whether it's a signal or a roundabout, and then. Just figure out how to how to pay for it and execute it. So.
Okay. Any other questions, folks?
And we're just talking about these, uh. Five points along the.
Yeah, so so you have to use some judgment, you know, to determine. Where is it likely that? You will have significant transportation impacts and so, uh. Would be best to analyze, and and you can see, we analyze. I down here in in town. Don't seem to get to a point that it's really significant as far as a a level service impact.
Right.
So it's really, you know, those couple up above that that. Are the most significant, and that's really, you know, towards the edge of your current urban growth area. So ultimately, you know, in the future. There may also be some impact, you know, further up towards the the interchange, I five interchange, and. You know, that's another area where Wash Dot. Will, as if if you start to annex property, uh, up towards. I five, as that happens, Wash Dot will be a lot more in. Get your planning process and saying, okay, so looks like you're gonna get more. We're trying to do, you know, turn lanes or signals or other things at the at the interchange and and. For you to help make sure that development helps to pay for that.
Okay, and then can you elaborate a little bit on why roundabout over a traffic light, that sort of thing, or how do you see that?
I personally like roundabouts, and partly because I've I've, you know, we're, I've got a couple near my house up in Redmond. Uh, when I was living in Olympia, there were a couple that that went in on, uh, Fourth Avenue of the Harrison Hill there, and, uh, there was a lot of. Uh, consternation when those two went in Olympia, um, because there used to be two signals there. And a lot of log trucks that went out towards West Bay, uh.
Well, controls the traffic better in my.
Yeah, and 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 I believe that that it does too, that it it provides.
I think they've done studies, it's like forty percent more.
Yeah, it's more, it's definitely more efficient.
Yeah.
Um, the complaints you get are the larger trucks.
That's what I was, that's.
And 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 so, um. As. If 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 Toledo is gonna grow enough. For it to be, uh, require. Intersection control of those two locations.
Right.
My guess is you're gonna have less large truck traffic. Um, and so you're gonna have more smaller vehicle traffic, so a roundabout, I think, is a. Pretty good solution, um, the. You do have times where you have constraints, like you talked about it at 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 Fifth and and and, you know, five oh five right now, that that. Because of, you know, available right away, it may not fit very well, a single lane roundabout may not fit very well without. Having to take right away from the 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 properties surrounding it.
Yeah, I don't know where the trucks would go on that alternative route to get through five oh five over the cowlets and all that, like, I don't know what other alternatives they have.
Yeah, well, and and they can, you can still have trucks get through roundabouts, but it's just, you you have truck aprons and whatnot. But it makes the roundabout a little bit bigger when you when you accommodate that, and so, um, my guess is. Just right off the top of my head, that you might end up with a signal there at Fifth. And then, you know, a roundabout maybe, uh, more of an effective choice up at the, you know, Jackson Highway and and Plamond and intersection with five oh five.
Yes, that's, okay.
But I I I we did one, uh, Clama did one. And bought some property we wanted to develop. And, you know, it's a big roundabout with a pretty big truck apron, um, and we, the developer of the port, uh, developed it, we were. We gotta make sure the trucks can get through, and they they figured out some ways to do that. There was a really large truck that needed to come through that that would take a, um. To do some additional changes to that roundabout to.
Pitch trucks with all the logs that come through sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's 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 pretty impressive that 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 rig that they needed to try to pass through there, they had to make some changes to the roundabout and the throats. To come into it to make that happen.
And you do not put landscape. You do not put landscaping in the middle.
No, that's not a good idea, so that. That's a long answer to a short question.
No, I understand, there's just considerations to be had, but where maybe more more appropriate for one area than the others.
Well, Todd and Mike, thank you both, been very informative. Shall we move on to the last part of our business, which is the uh. Uh, the comprehensive plan update schedule that you brought in?
Sure. I I guess I've been bringing this back every month and I forget to get it in your pack.
Yeah, I didn't read it.
But we're making. But we're making good progress, um, I I did add a couple of sections down here, uh, four, five and six. The ability to be able to do that. Yeah, I'm I'm already now, I'm I'm working on grant deliverables, which helps me to organize files and when I'm organizing files, we're also starting to compile. The comprehensive plan document itself and then also starting to come up with all the documents that we need in in order to affect the code changes required. We have a couple of small tweaks that aren't listed in here that I didn't add into this yet um to your um to your state mandated timelines. That were required to make for your procedures. Now, I've opted not to try and get a whole procedures code rewrite into this one, so all we're doing is making some minor tweaks. So I've, that's one line that I have to add that I had forgotten to add in until um last week when we were talking about it. The question comes up as a result of this schedule. Um, we we still have to get through the habitat pieces. Um, and then I don't, I don't know, Mike, with the with the comp plan capital facilities element. That has all of these attached, do you wanna bring that back to planning commission again, or is that? Or is that just something we can present as part of the entire package?
I think we can present it, I mean, as part of the entire package, I mean, I I I think there's.
This is the surprise, right?
Yeah, I think.
So just reading the words about what it is and what it says.
Well, I need to ref, you know, do a little refinement on the wastewater end. Um, and I I wanna make a few length, help our sub on the transitions, I make a few language. Describing comp plan versus urban.
Do you want more time with planning commission on that or just?
I don't think it's gonna, whether he changes his numbers or not, they're not gonna really affect how we view the overall. Aspect of it, so do what you do and.
Yeah. Can I ask one question and I don't mean to extend our time too much, but but regarding the plan itself, will the plan? Uh, be as specific as things of uh when the population reaches this percent, that we can look at making the investment. And these particular components of the plan and so on, like, is it a tiered approach where as we grow? We have expenses that don't put us out too much anticipating capacity in case it doesn't happen, so we're kind of meeting it along the way. I know that can't be perfect, but my question is just. Are there elements of that in that plan?
Yeah. And the water piece, um. They're, let's say, small enough to scrape chunks that I don't think I'm gonna, you know, necessarily. Have. Break that up any further, the the wastewater treatment plant, yeah, I, you know, I I, as we dive into that a little deeper, we can. Try to identify. You know, is there ways to phase this or, you know, is this really just one big bite?
Yeah, just so the.
So is the challenge with the treatment with the treatment, you know, and and so you can think about phasing things, so so. Let's just say that for rough numbers, you know, we need to double the treatment plan, so we need to. The most efficient way to do that is to do that all all at once, double thing all at once. And that's gonna be the most cost effective way to do it, right? That's also the most risky because you gotta take, you know, fifteen, twenty million dollars and. Lay it out there and and hope that the growth comes to 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 pay for that over time. Um, another way is to say, okay, instead of doing double it, let's do another half and then another. I need to do it in two phases and then you've got, um, but the the benefit of that is that you have less risk. In doing each phase, because you 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 make that investment. Thinking that the next wave of development is coming, you have an economic downturn, uh, we're paying on this until that comes, so.
So we can do a little bit of that, but but probably not to the degree that you're thinking it's. It's not a prescriptive menu that says add add a hundred rooftops, do these things, add two hundred rooftops, do these things.
Yeah, I'm thinking in terms of like the the reservoir tanks will probably be much more efficient to build a large one once.
Yeah, yeah.
Bonds is is for a little bit, that sort of thing, I don't know.
Let me ask you this, Renee. From the standpoint of the general plan, we're trying to project a future growth pattern.
Right.
And it does not preclude us from having a set aside. Uh, proposal or or report that that gives us more of a consensus timeline.
Yeah.
On when we should start looking, but the same, the same two guys who's uh who said they're going to be here to push us along. Uh, probably have a good sense of what that timeline is and I don't think it would be too terrible to. Put it on papers, just a a general guideline of, you know, what critical uh markers you wanna hit. And when you wanna start thinking about. But they don't necessarily.
But it's a comprehensive plan and and a capital facilities assessment to support it.
Yeah.
Um, usually, you know, the, as you. Get it, to get into that more specific detail, you would then, you know, do a a general sewer and wastewater facility plan. That takes you from the thirty thousand foot. Down to down to the ten thousand foot level where you're you're looking at unit processes and capacities in each one and and is it more efficient to? To do one, two or three additional units and and what trigger point would you do though?
Right. Okay, thank you.
So the big question that comes out of all of that.
Yes, sir.
Our next meeting is is June, well, June eighteenth. I'm not gonna make the same mistake this year that I did last year, Juneteenth is actually on June nineteenth, so. This this past year, we had a a snafu where I actually scheduled a planning commission meeting on on Juneteenth.
Okay, your last meeting, you actually did tend to lay for.
May twenty eighth.
May twenty eighth. So we could have. Um, so we could have, May twenty eighth is in my calendar.
Is that so good for you?
It still works for me, it, do we wanna could have that meeting, I I can, I can populate that meeting with, um. Hopefully habitat, but if not habitat, then I can bring back some of the timeline changes to code and some of the other things.
If it's gonna help us move through to make sure we meet our deadline.
It is.
I I have time if you guys.
I'm fine.
Everybody's still fine with that, okay.
About six o'clock, same time.
Same time, same channel, that's, that's what we had talked, that's what's in my calendar, so.
Very good.
Um, and I hope you bring back the habitat code for your first look at that meeting. I can bring back any changes that Mike wants to send back on the on those comp plan elements, but I can also bring back some, I can. The minor changes that I'm gonna make to your procedures codes to be, stay compliant. Maybe do a time.
Well, once again, thank you, the uh the reports that were submitted to our package were. Thoroughly enjoyable to read, they're a little scary, but.
Page starters.
What's that?
They were page starters.
Yes. Anyways, um, thanks again. Do I have anybody else here, any public comments? Would you like to? You wanna step forward, please, to the podium, state your name and.
So, Steve Samco, uh, second pine. Um, I just wanted to reiterate what Steve mentioned, was that there is a small group of people in this town that really do care. And wanna be involved, but we're all getting tired. So I just wanted to reiterate, thank you for putting that right.
Okay, at that, well, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, we do need to, do we need to do something about Lucas or is that?
Well, I should probably officially identify the fact that Lucas Guevara has resigned from the council for personal reasons and that or from the commission. And that there is an outstanding ad on uh the city webpage for a replacement.
And if you know anyone.
I do.
Yay.
Maybe.
Yay, alright.
Say his name out loud here because, you know, he might say, are you crazy?
It'll be on the record, Tom.
So now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I, uh, yes, uh, I moved the motion, we adjourned.
I second. All in favor, say aye.